This is Tuesday, November 22nd. I will call the regular council meeting of the City of Twinsburg to order. Call the roll Shannon.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Cerisi?
Here.
Ms. McPherson?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Steel?
Here.
Okay, next we'll have the invocation and the pledge. Please rise.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us in planning for the future of the City of Twinsburg. Give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community so that we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge and beliefs to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes from November 8th. Those did come out today. Did everybody have a chance to look at them or would you like to look at them now? She sent them electronically and we also had a copy on our desks up here tonight.
Right. Mr. Scafidi, I need to make a motion to amend it.
Okay, where at?
It's page three on my report from the ARB. The first line says the ARB met November the 3rd and passed the maintenance shed for the fitness center and in fact they did not pass the thing.
Didn't they?
And Shannon, I'm sorry, it was probably my mistake.
But they did pass for the three homes and signs?
Yes, everything else is correct.
Okay.
I will second your motion.
Pardon me?
I second his motion.
Okay, Gary seconded the motion to amend. Anybody have anything else? Call the roll on the amendment.
Mr. Steel?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Okay, anything else on the minutes? Then the minutes, the minutes will stand as amended, passed as amended. Okay, next we have audience participation. Shannon?
Yes, we have Bob Thues.
Good evening, this is Bob Thues, Meadowwood Plan, Demi Drive. This is the week of Thanksgiving, so it just, it's time to, it reminds us if it's time to give thanks to the things, the good things we have. And, and thinking about it, I know we don't give enough recognition many times to what our city does for us and I would like to take a moment and thank many of those departments that help us. The Police Department, we have an outstanding Police Department and leadership. The Fire Department, same way, we're very, very fortunate. People in, in the, on staff have been wonderful, supportive, and I can't say enough about it. But most, mostly, I want to say thanks that I live in a community of people, of Twinsburg people. And the reason I want to say that is that the, the eight accidents that happened at the Roundabout should have been 24 to 30 because many of the people of Twinsburg were wise enough to jam on brakes and save themselves and save other people. So, I just want to say from that standpoint, our people probably are a little bit wiser than, than people give them credit. So, I just want to thank everybody in general, thanks, and because it is that season and we don't do it enough as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else Shannon?
There is none.
Okay. Any other, there's no awards and presentations. Council Communication Committee reports, Mr. Stoffer, you want to start?
Well, the PZI had a work session to discuss an appeal for a variance by PDQ hospitality from extended stay hotel. They had the work session and then afterwards there was, they had some public participation and they decided to table it. So, there's been no date scheduled for another meeting, but right now there's really nothing, nothing going on as far as I know right there. You haven't heard anything?
Oh, yes.
What's happening?
You said this was about that new hotel?
Yeah.
Okay. I couldn't hear. Thank you.
I think they said hold for now. My other committees, I can have that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Steel?
The ARB met last Thursday. They did discuss the storage shed that's proposed up at the fitness center again. They took no action other than to advise the fitness center staff to redesign the thing and bring it back again. They also did three houses and there was two places with different signings that they approved. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roden?
Thank you. Actually, none of my committees have met, so I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Okay, and good evening, under my report, actually none of my committees have met either and I also have no report. Mrs. McPherson?
Well, the Chamber Board met on November 8th. I really don't have any report on that. Their next meeting is Wednesday, December 10th in the morning at the Public Library. The Golf Advisory Committee met on the 14th of November. They just had a report of where we are here today, the golf course, everything was very positive and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cerisi?
The Twins Day Committee met on November 9th, the day after our last council meeting, and they're just going ahead with plans for the 2017 festival. And that's the only committee that met. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. The Planning Commission met Monday, November 21st. The only thing on the agenda was a conditional use permit for Sentry equipment. Sentry equipment is renovating a 41,000 square foot building. They have 20,000 square foot as a general warehouse, 6,000 square foot as a hard storage, showroom for 3,500 square feet and 8,000 square feet for office space. It'll have 12 full-time workers in the, in the back and additional sales force for a total of 22 employees. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended that council, to council, a recommendation for approval. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that, that we approve the conditional use permit for Sentry equipment located at 2266 Etsorora Road, Suite 100, with the following conditions, that they repair the fence and that they stripe the 54 parking spaces that they would need between their customers and their employees, plus two for handicap. Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steel?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Did you say me? Yes.
Yes. Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Thank you. The next meeting for the Planning Commission is December 5th. Also regarding the NOPEC change of electric users, lots of people got a letter a few weeks ago that said that they were ending a contract with First Energy. NOPEC on behalf of Twinsburg, which for electric, as we are a member of NOPEC for electric, has gone into a contract with a company called Nextra Energy. And if you're in the, if you're in that program currently and we're getting your energy for First En, First Energy, you will be automatically included. It's an opt-out program. If you would like to compare the rate, if you go on the PUCO website, Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, apples to apples for electric, you can see if the, the offer is what you're looking for. You can opt out at any time and the, the new rate for commercial, for residential would be .04, 05, 258, so.
So.
Go ahead.
If a resident, because I think many residents kind of read it, may have misplaced that letter, is there another way to opt out?
Since, since it's, this company will send out a letter notifying you that you're, they're your new electric company if you're using the NOPEC deal.
Right, but if they want to not stay on that program and opt out, is there somewhere else you can go if you can keep your letter?
Well, you would go to the website for the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, PUCO. They would ask you if you want to see the residential rates or the commercial rates. You would click residential and then it'll ask you if you want to look at gas or electric. Click electric and it'll give you the options. You can be a variable, you can have one month, three months, six months, 12 months, 36 months, lots of different choices. But we're a member of NOPEC, so you would have to do that research on your own.
The opt-out letters were mailed, I believe, yesterday. So, someone's either, they're just getting them or, yeah, they should be receiving them.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to step back one second. I forgot to mention that Friday, last Friday night, I had the opportunity to help out at the senior Thanksgiving dinner that was put on by the senior department. And Laura headed up that group, heads up that group, of course, and it was a really, really nice event. The food looked very good. Actually, I got to taste it, it tasted very good, too. It was very good. The seniors all appreciated it. She had a full house there and it was just a nice event. It was really a nice Thanksgiving way to kick off the Thanksgiving season for them. And I'll tell you what, all those seniors were so appreciative as I walked around and talked with them and they were just so thankful for being there and they thought everything was great and they asked if we took tips and I made a fortune. I took nothing. I had no money. But it turned out to be a very nice event, so I just want to give Laura the kudos for that. She did a great job. And that's all. Mayor, your request?
Thanks, Sam. Good evening, everyone. I did also attend that Thanksgiving dinner. I just want to thank Anna Maria for, for sponsoring that.
That's true.
You know, we have, I believe we had 150 to 175 seniors there and I was fortunate enough to be able to bring my in-laws, they wanted to come and to ask what the charge was and it was a dollar apiece. So, we do that event for a dollar apiece for our seniors and it was a huge plate of food that they were served, so. But they do a great job, it was a fun event. Also, another couple of things going on in town. The turkey trot again was a big success. We had a good turnout for it. We had a great day, great morning. A lot of runners from all over the place came to participate in that. Parks and Rec did a great job running that. I know coming up this weekend, we have Luminosity, so I'm probably just taking most of Derek's report, but I always do. That's coming up this weekend at 6:00 PM. So, that event, I believe this is our third annual, so we congregate here, we do a nice lighting ceremony at City Hall and I believe we have close to probably a couple thousand people that have shown up for that the last couple of years. So, it's a great event, encourage you to come out. We close down Ravenna Road, march down to the square and then we light up the square. So, it's, it's really a fun time, so I encourage everyone Saturday night to come out and participate in that. I just wanted to give an update on, the last meeting, I kind of gave a lot of background information on the 91 Project with the Roundabout and I just want to bring everyone kind of up to speed because some things have changed. So, after that meeting, I began a week and a half long negotiating with, with ODOT and the construction company and was able to, and I'm the one that approved them to go ahead and do the final paving, which is what shut down that place for what, Thursday and Friday of last week. So, Wednesday afternoon, we came to an agreement that they were going to come and do final milling and paving to go ahead and finish the project. We still have East West closed, there's some minor stuff they need to do just north of the Roundabout. I'm taking a position that I don't want it completely open until it's done and all the barrels are gone and we're able to get some of the electronic signs to let people know it's completely done. And so, that's where we're at. So, we're hoping by the end, I got one phone call today about exactly when is it going to be open and we're looking probably toward the end of next week. If it's open sooner, we'll notify everybody that we can, we'll have the signs up, but that's kind of where things stand. So, we were able to get final pavement down and everything complete. We're waiting on, we have additional lighting since the last meeting that was installed over the Roundabout. That was one of the concerns, I believe, that was shared by GPD. So, we have additional lighting lining up that place and then I believe Ohioisans coming out to, to provide electricity to the hog signals and we're hoping that by the end of next week, we're, we're complete with that. So, that's where we stand on that. If you have any other questions or concerns, feel free to call me. May be tough to catch the next couple of days, but send me an email, I'll get it. And other than that, I just want to wish everyone, council, residents, just a wonderful Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Okay. Department reports.
All right. Collette, you want to start?
Good evening, everybody. In the IT Department, besides Mark's hard work with getting our landline phone system coming soon, in the, for cell phones, Verizon has given the city free upgrades for all our cellphone users in the city, so all the employees that had phones had the option to upgrade the iPhone 6 for free. So, Zach's been running around upgrading everybody's phones. Some, a lot of the guys still had the old flip phones and that, so this is a huge upgrade for them. In the HR Department, last week we had our annual employee service awards luncheon, it's an appreciation luncheon, and we recognize employees for their incremental years of service and we had 31 service awards that we handed out. We had six that were five-year awards, six that were 10-year awards, four 15-year awards, 14 20-year awards and one 25-year award, that's Ted Martin in our wastewater department. So, we have a lot of longevity here. And in conjunction with our wellness program, on December 6th, we'll be hosting an employee luncheon, like a luncheon learn. Dr. Shelby's going to come in and talk about how to, how to pack healthy food for work, like a healthy lunch, healthy snacks and so we don't have to raid Chin's snack, snack bar over there at the Snicker Bars. We're also in the process currently of planning some small group employee benefits meetings, like where we can just, we're going to go around to all the different departments and we're also going to have two meetings in the evenings where spouses can attend and just kind of ask questions because every, you know, every February, we have our open enrollment meetings and our broker comes out and explains, you know, the benefit plans and the costs and things like that. But a lot of people just have questions about where to go for the best treatment, what apps to use, what websites, how to use them, tips and tricks on, you know, different kinds of healthcare-related items, lots, lots of questions. So, myself, someone from Oswald, maybe it's one or two other people that could help out are going to be holding these small group meetings in, in police and fire and just all the different departments. So, that's coming up in the early part of January. For civil service, the Civil Service Commission met on November 10th. Assistant Chief Bob Goncheski requested permission to move forward with a full-time dispatch exam and that motion passed three to zero. The Fire Chief, Tim Morgan, requested permission to administer a full-time firefighter exam and that motion also passed three to zero. So, we'll be setting up those exams for sometime, probably January, February, right around that timeframe, not, not during the holidays. And the next civil service meeting is December 8th. That's all I have.
Thank you.
So, have a great Thanksgiving and anybody that's traveling, safe travels.
Thanks, Collette.
Derek, can we come up?
I will say, I think in 15 years, this has been the busiest past six weeks of my tenure here and it's still going. With the Indians Party and having our arts festival in the fall this year and opening up and designing the Berg Cafe has been a big undertaking for myself and, and the department. And then also getting this theater show off and running. So, Little Mermaid, Little Mermaid is in rehearsals now and it's a big beast to organize, you know, 100 and something casts and volunteers and directors. So, that's, that's underway, we're excited about that show. We have things coming up. We have the holiday giving tree at the fitness center for those to help kids with Summit, in Summit County. You can get a tag at the fitness center and then bring a gift in and we'll get that delivered to Summit County here later in December. Luminosity, like the mayor mentioned, is this Saturday at 6 o'clock. We do start here. In the past, some people kind of skip and go to the square, which is fine, but you do miss out on some of the, there's some giveaways and some things that go on here at City Hall, so we hope you can start here. We do have some cool new elements, I'll leave it up to surprise, so you have to come and see it, but it's going to be a really cool show. So far, the weather looks like it's going to be good, so we're hopeful for a nice night. It's not going to be that long, maybe done by 7:30 the latest, so it's pretty compact. Winter Wonderland is after that, so that's on December 4th from 1 to 4 at the fitness center. Breakfast with Santos almost sold out and that's December 10th. We're going to be at Fire Station Number One again for that, so if you're interested in coming to that, you do want to sign up ASAP. And then our Light the Night Hanukkah event is on December 28th, 6 o'clock at the Community Center. All these events can be found on Facebook, so if you like Twinsburg Parks and Recreation on Facebook, you can see all the events, you can join all the events or say you're interested in the events, you can get updates of what's, what's happening. We've just started registration for winter break camps, so those kids need something to do during winter break from school. You can sign up and do one day or all the days that you're off from school at the fitness center for that camp. The mayor mentioned and Mr. Scafidi mentioned Thanksgiving and now for the seniors, next up, one of their bigger events is the holiday party at, at the Hilton. And I did want to give you an update on the TFC Locker Room Project, the low bidder, we were supposed to meet actually yesterday, he had to change his schedule, so we're going to meet next Monday to talk about, you know, he was significantly lower than the, the one bid above him, so we want to just make sure that we're all on the same page and that he bid what he was, you know, the project entailed before we actually come back to you and go ahead and accept that bid. So, hopefully, maybe next meeting or the one after that, we'll get that before you and the project's still not going to take place until the end of February, beginning of March anyway, so we have a little bit of time. We want to make sure we're not, you know, there was such a big discrepancy, we want to make sure we do our due diligence and, and check that out. And that's all I have, have a happy holiday, happy Thanksgiving.
Derek, we do have one question.
Yeah.
Derek, how's the cafe going?
It's good. I mean, it's been, it's hard to tell because we had a huge, the rest, or the basketball day and the swim lesson day, we like quadrupled our income than we had any other day. So, you know, it was kind of a huge undertaking and we have, you know, we're still getting in new staff, we're still, you know, seeing how the hours, you know, we opened early enough, opened a little bit later. We're hoping to have a ribbon, official ribbon cutting sermon everyone will be invited to. Probably in the next few weeks, we're going to talk to the chamber and see if we can get that put together. But, you know, so far, so good. I don't have, you know, number numbers, but I will be getting those once we get a whole month in here to, to figure things out. But if you haven't tried it, I mean, I think it's, you know, affordable prices, you know, a lot more variety than we've ever had in the past. You know, you can quickly just get something and go, you can get healthy, you can, you know, get junk, you know, a little, a little of everything. But, you know, it's, I think, you know, we've gotten a lot of positive responses from just the design of it, the look of it, how it fits in there, so it's, on that aspect, it's been well.
I don't know if this is the place, but I, do you plan on selling hot chocolate there? The day of the turkey trot, when I was there, it seemed, and that's just a small, a small window, but several people were coming up there looking for hot chocolate and we don't sell that there.
Yeah. We have coffee, but not chocolate. Yeah, we have to get hot water though, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have the hot water, we just got to get the packets probably.
Yeah. Probably with the little spotty thing.
Yeah, we have that.
The word from kids is that it's, they're enjoying it, so. My son lives up there for swim team and he likes it, so.
It looks nice.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things that we talked about trying to do is get some gift cards and stuff so that maybe parents could load it up for their kids. The kids would have that, maybe give a little bit of discount, if you buy $50 on it, you get a little bit of a discount. That way, when the kids are coming in out of the fitness center, they have a way of...
It would be very easy. It would be nice to do that because it'd be helpful, you know, the council would look for money.
And we just got our merchant accounts set up there, I think, yesterday, so now that we have our merchant accounts up, we can do things like that and do gift cards and stuff.
Thanks, Derek.
It was a little bit on the rough.
It was almost 40,000 less, do you know?
It was significantly less, like over 25,000 less than the next one.
Yeah, so I think it was 200,000, or 220 was our bid and it came in, I think it was even less, I think it was like 186.
Okay, thank you. It was crazy.
Okay, thanks, Derek.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Alice, Jim?
Jim, you want to come up?
Over the last few weeks, our staff has been busy keeping the golf course clear of leaves and we'll have another round of cleanup after the snow melts off, which it looks like most of it melted off today. Also, we have been preparing the golf course for winter. Some of these items include blowing out the irrigation system, pump station and outside restroom so the piping doesn't freeze. We started to bring in some of the golf course items such as benches, ball washers, trap breaks and trash cans for offseason maintenance. Our seasonal staff will be done working within the next two weeks and then the 2017 posting for seasonal jobs will go up sometime in January, early February. It's hard to believe, it comes on quick, right after the season ends. The third phase of improvements and renovations are mostly complete at this time. There are a few items that will need to be finished up over the winter and then the contractor would be back in the spring for any punch list items that need to be done. All dirt work and seeding is finished and we did get excellent germination on a lot of areas for a good head start going into spring. The golf course is open on a day-to-day basis and Brian and I will determine a close date once we feel it's time. Factors that determine closing are weather, course condition, lack of demand for golf and injury to the golf course. Lastly, if anyone is looking for any gift ideas during the holiday season, you can purchase rounds of golf gift certificates and merchandise up at the clubhouse. And that concludes my report. Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, you too.
Karen?
Good evening, everyone. Just like to announce that finally, the 2015 audit report is now available on the Auditor State's website. I think I did have it forwarded over to you guys for your review. And that will be also posted on the Finance Department's website as well. We're also continuing to work on Ohio Checkbook Open Gov with the State Treasurer's Office as well. We're looking to be up and live in January, we're just going through, trying to get what we want it to look like, et cetera, the data and what we will retain on our own financial, on our own finance website as well. December 13th, requesting to have, I think it's already on the agenda, to have a Finance Committee meeting to go ahead and finish up our, from our previous meeting, to discuss distribution of building up particular funds, et cetera. And just to do a look, a reflection back on as far as the collection of income tax that we received, as well as other revenue sources and how we fared as far as expenditures, et cetera, over what we took in for, for this year. So, I think that'd be a nice recap for the, for the last of Finance Committee meeting of the year. We received our November distribution. We received 1,77,656 compared to last year of 1,612,374. This reflects a decrease of 33.15% or 534,437. Again, that's reflective of the refund that we had to do that came notice in, in October and it was reflective in November's collections. Refund adjustments was 15,401. The total year-to-date receipts collected, 19,224,362 compared to last year, 17,841,468. This reflects still an increase of about 8% or 1,382,894 more over last year. The total net change in distribution for both, for all individual, net profit as well as withholding, 134,495. And that's all I have to report.
That's all we have? Is that it? Okay. Next, we will move on to legislation. Okay, first we have Ordinance 104, 2016.
An ordinance authorizing the sale at auction of certain personal property owned by the City of Twinsburg and no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Okay, and this is on its third reading. Again, Shannon provided us with an updated list of the auction items. So, that being said, I'll make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 104, 2016. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cerisi, seconds. Any more discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Steel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 104-2016 passes seven-zero. Ordinance 108-2016?
The annual appropriation ordinance of the year 2017 approved by council from estimates submitted by the mayor, providing for the ordinary expenses and other necessary expenses of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017.
Okay, and that's its second reading. We have Ordinance 110-2016.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Life Force Management Incorporated for the billing services in connection with the EMS services.
Okay, that's also its second reading. We have Ordinance 111-2016.
An ordinance amending Section 147, employees generally of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg.
Okay, and that is also its second reading. Next, we have Ordinance 113-2016.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general and special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 6-2016, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2016 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 113-2016, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stauffer, seconds. Any discussion on emergency? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to adopt Ordinance 113-2016 as an emergency. Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Roden makes the motion. One second.
I'll second.
Mr. Ceraci? Okay, yeah, what this is, is it's an emergency to amend the professional services account by $30,000 for architectural services, and that was to pay an invoice from Gulf Sense. And the reason for the emergency is so that we can get that invoice paid. Anything else? Call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 113-2016 passes seven-zero as an emergency. Ordinance 114-2016?
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general and special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 6-2016, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2016 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 114-2016, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion from somebody to adopt the Ordinance 114-2016 as an emergency.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mrs. Stauffer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. What this is, is 114, it's to ensure that the federal and state of Ohio grant funds received by the police department are accurately, accurately recorded, and the finance director did ask that we do place this on an emergency tonight so we can pass it. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 114-2016 passes seven-zero as an emergency. Ordinance 115-2016?
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general and special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 6-2016, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2016 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 115-2016, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, second. Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt Ordinance 115-2016 as an emergency. Somebody want to make that motion? So moved. Mr. Ceraci?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, seconds. What this is, it's the appropriation amendment for the OPWC grant funding for Darryl Road in the amount of 532,086. Any other discussion?
Just, this is for the existing one. This isn't for the future. This is for the existing one, just to clarify.
Okay. Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 115-2016 passes seven-zero as an emergency. We have Ordinance 116-2016.
An ordinance accepting the bid of Cintas Corporation for the uniform and floor mat rental service contract and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 116-2016, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.